First item on the agenda is indication of political allegiance to the US Texas flag. Captain G. H. Jones, Commissioner Washington, I lead.
A father of God, I want to thank you for this day. This is the day that you have made it. We're going to rejoice and be happy in it. Thank you for letting us be in a country free of religion and freedom of speech. Even though America has a problem, there's no other country like America. First, I commend your county commission as we take the initiative for Brazos County. Lead them and guide them always in the right direction and in the right path. Pray for the Brazos County Board of Elders family. Pray for Texas. We pray for America. We pray for those up in Washington DC. That they will cross down and work together for the betterment of this country, our politicians. But we must realize that together we stand and after men land and finally fall. Well, there's unity that's strength. We pray for all of our Lord's postman officers who lie there in Jebedee's Day and Popeyes. Be with each of us throughout the day and every matter, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor of the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Thank you, Captain Jones, Commissioner. Second item on the agenda is call for citizens' input and our concerns. And I think we've got some folks that want to speak this morning. Uh, I think LG Crum, did you want to speak first? Come on the-
All right, I'll try to talk into the mic. Get up close.
Judge Peters, members of the court, I'm LG Crum. I wish to address some concerns about a project which adversely affects the neighborhood in which I live. Sonoco, an oil company, is established in crude oil gathering, storage, and distribution station within a few hundred feet of my home. This will be an around-the-clock daily operation creating safety, noise, and environmental issues in the highly populated area. Access to this area is along a narrow street, Roan's Chapel Road. There are homes on both sides of the road, and there's also a historical black church which will be affected. Some specific safety issue items are numerous trucks operating on Roan's Chapel Road and other streets in the area will make the local family use hazardous. Currently neighbors use the streets for jogging, walking, bicycling, pushing babies in carriages. Historically, oil spills and fires do occur in these operations. There will be noise, lights, and fumes 24 hours a day. Real estate values have already taken a hit and will continue to do so as this project continues. There are other available options for Sonoco, which need to be explored. They need to relocate in a less densely populated area for safer operations. As it is the purpose of government to support, promote, the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens, I am asking this court to become involved in finding a rational solution to the issue. These safety, health, and welfare issues need to be addressed immediately. It is my considered opinion that this court not only has a moral but a legal obligation to address the problems as I have outlined today. These are the issues. The next step is up to this court to solve them. Thank you very much for your kind consideration and attention.
Thank you. And as you know, we can't respond, in this portion of the agenda, we can't respond back. Uh, it's not a listed item on the agenda. Uh, is there someone else? Is there an order that anybody wanted to speak in? If not, I- David, do you want to speak next? We'll go down the list.
As my neighbor mentioned-
Can you say your-
Oh, I'm sorry. David Hilburn, H.I.L.B.U.R.N.
Thank you.
As some of my neighbor, as my neighbor mentioned, uh, one of our biggest concerns is safety. Uh, there was a meeting that the county judge and Ms. Catalina were there back in July, uh, where we discussed, and Sonoco representatives were there as well, and talked about the safety hazards of that road specifically and driving trucks through that neighborhood specifically. And the Sonoco representatives recognized, they said, "Do we recognize the dangers going through these?" Obviously, as someone who has two young children, that's my biggest concern, is, as my neighbor, Mr. Crum, just mentioned, the inability to let my child take a bicycle ride. The inability to take our stroller out with our seventeen-month-old because of the truck traffic that's coming by Christmas. There are- the good part about living in the county is I get to do what I want with my land. The downside is it's due to my neighbors. And that's the situation we're in. But that's why we're here before you, because you do have some authority. Specifically, in the transportation code, 251151 allows you to regulate traffic on a county road. If you look at a Attorney General opinion, GA 0088, it is one in Somerville County discussing a similar situation regarding a mining road, where it talked about, uh, commissions court can post a no-through traffic road. It talks specifically about shutting down basically any through traffic, not just overweight, but any truck traffic. Now, how it affects us as citizens, I don't know, but that's something we can at least look into. Weight limits, you have the authority to do that under section, it's through the administrative code 25.2 and, uh, transportation code 621301. There are certain procedures that have to be followed, it has to be approved by Texas Department, but there are procedures that can be done to do that. And there's several reasons to do it. Number one, for safety, but two other reasons is the value, inherent value that we have in our land that's being diminished daily as we speak. There are several houses for sale that are not being sold because the value is plummeting. But as a fiscal conservative body here, what about the investment that this body has already invested in those roads that we're forfeiting by not acting? We're forfeiting the money we've already spent and saying, "Look, destroy the roads and yeah, we'll have to fix them because we're the county," which we would. But why not do everything possible that we can to prevent the damage that's going to be done so that we don't have to spend more money down the road? So those are several reasons to at least look into what we can do, and I pray that this court does everything you can do to protect 125 landowners and not just the one.
Thank you, David. Uh, Linda Watts?
Hello, I'm Linda Watts, and thank you very much for letting me speak today. Uh, both of our neighbors have already said basically what I wanted to say, but also I wanted to take it on a little bit more personal note. We've lived, I've lived in, in, uh, Rainbow Acres for seventeen years. My husband built a house there in seventy-nine, really seventy-eight, and, um, during the time that I've lived there, I have been on the streets for over three hundred and fifty-five miles because I clock all my walking and my running. I have never been frightened to go out in the mornings, at four in the morning if I wanted to go and do my exercise or my walk, nine o'clock at night, never frightened in any way. But I am frightened about, about Sonoco coming in with their large trucks and having no control on the speed, having no control on the fact that I will be out there. And not only that, but I'm going to address another issue, and that is that we have a whole neighborhood of wildlife. We have deer, we have every kind of wildlife that you can imagine out there, including two little foxes. And just the fact that those trucks are coming down our roads at those speeds and our animals are crossing the road is very frightening to me because they're very difficult to see at night. Um, and, and we don't want that to, to happen where we're starting to lose our wildlife. But the bottom line to all of this is, we want safety out in our neighborhood. We need safety. We need it for our children. You can imagine what I have seen out there in seventeen years. And, uh, we, I've seen the babies, I've seen the little kids in their helmets on bicycles. I have seen, I probably have seen everything that goes on in that neighborhood for quite some time. Please, Court, Commissioner, Court, uh, Brazos County Court, please help us with this situation. The, uh, trucks have no control. Uh, they can come down those roads at any speed they want to come down those roads. They can, uh, they're going to have trouble transversing the, the, uh, the road, they're narrow. They are perfect for us, and whenever, uh, we've had bad weather or something that has put holes in those roads, y'all have been so gracious and come in and fix those so that we can keep our neighborhood in a safe position. We have to have some help from somebody to take care of this safety issue, and y'all are the ones that we're turning to. Please consider helping us in whatever way you can to keep our neighborhood safe, uh, at this, at this time. And, uh, David spoke about the value of homes. Our intention is to, we've already retired, basically, but our intention is to live the rest of our lives in that home. And, you know, we don't want to have to go in and sell it. We couldn't sell it anyway with this, I don't think, with this Sonoco coming in. So please consider doing whatever you can to help us get safety for our roads, uh, whether it's a different route that they are required to come in, whether it's speed signs, whether it's weight limit, whatever y'all deem to be important for our safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, White Griffin?
Uh, I basically want to agree with what has already been stated particularly by the first two speakers. One, there's a safety issue. There's a safety issue on the, uh, Roan's Chapel Road to begin with, but also pulling on and off thirty creates, it's on a bend, and it creates a very bad situation that's going to occur at that particular intersection. Uh, I'd also like to say, reiterate, property values are already, pardon me, are already going down because of this. And so, basically, I would like to agree that we need load limits, signs all over, and we need, uh, no-truck signs all over. So that they're, if they're going to do this, they're going to have to get permits so to do it, but at least it'll force them to do that. And the other thing I was concerned about was the lack of transparency that it seems to be has occurred. In other words, the neighborhood didn't find out about it until the county came out and says, "Well, we need property rights. We need ten feet of your property." And that's when we found out that this was going to happen. And so my complaint is, we should have been notified as soon as Sonoco, uh, wanted to buy that property and came to you, okay? And you didn't notify us. Anyway, so I would like to see a lot more transparency out of this commission. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Milton Radke, Dr. Radke?
My name is Milton Radke, R.A.D.K.E. I reside at eleven three eight eight Golden Mist College Station, Texas, in the Rainbow Acres subdivision. I would like to address the Commissioner's Court today and on the same issues that have been presented to this point. Now, I would like to go back a few years. Rainbow Acres was platted in nineteen sixty-three. We had, uh, at that time, gravel roads. There was a lot of issues with that, with dust and stuff like that, but the roads were narrow, I think about twenty-foot wide. The, and we lived with that situation until the mid-nineties. In the mid-nineties, uh, we approached the county and, uh, all the property owners in Rainbow Acres entered into an agreement with a cost-sharing, uh, agreement where the county would, uh, surface the roads, and I'm sure all of you remember that, and it's been a wonderful, wonderful asset to our community. It's improved the quality of life. But at that point, I, the characteristics of our transportation system, there are six roads in our subdivision. Those six roads have been, has been illustrated here, have turned into playgrounds, have turned into walking, uh, and jogging trails. You know what we're talking about. They even have, uh, avenues for slow-moving vehicles. We're a neighborhood out there, and we support each other. We have lawnmowers, tractors moving up and down the roadway, and all of these things have really created a quality of life that we want to preserve. Now, my background is in transportation. Transportation research, transportation design, operation, and maintenance. I've lectured nationwide on traffic control devices and the authority associated with installation and operation of those facilities. I would plead with the Commissioner's Court to reexamine your authority. I think we have the things in place. If you don't have, let's get them in place. We can, because this will significantly impact, you know, the quality of life that we have out there, the safety of our, and, and needless to say, those roadways, there's, uh, school buses moving across the, the, uh, up and down the roadways. So we've got a, uh, a, a situation where it will get tremendously hazardous for not only the operation and safety of our school kids, but for the property owners that are moving and trying to get access. Think about this. Uh, Sonoco told us that, uh, there would be forty to fifty trucks using this facility in a twenty-four-hour period. That really means that there's eighty trips through the neighborhood. Now, if you do the math on it, you're looking at probably a truck every twelve to fifteen minutes. Now, if you look at the history of the development of these stations across the state, and it's driven by the oil industry, you understand that, and we understand that. But the bottom line is, stations such as this not only, um, grow, they double, triple, and quadruple in a very short period of time. Now, I would ask you to just put yourself in our position. You're looking at a roadway where initially we had one truck maybe every twelve to fifteen minutes. Now you're looking at a truck either entering or leaving every two to four minutes, twenty-four hours a day. Now, you know as well as I do, trucks, pedestrians, don't mix. I mean, there's just no way under the situation that we're in. The roadways, as I said, are narrow. Two trucks can't pass on our roadways, which means that you gotta enter at one exit on one road and leave at another, which means that the truck distribution is throughout the neighborhood. So I request that you really give serious consideration to helping us find a solution. The other thing is that, that you've been very nice to us in, in participating and helping us in the past, but, you know, we need some help now. If you're waiting on us to take some kind of action, just advise us on what action we need to take, whether that's a petition or what. We're prepared to get any support. We're prepared to do just about anything you ask, but we do need your help. We see this as the county taking the lead in making our environment safe, protecting our environment, and giving us the same quality of life that we have learned to live with over the past twenty, thirty years. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Radke. Uh, Brian?
Uh, my name's Brian Koba. I live off of forty-one-eleven Rainbow Trail, and I basically can echo everything that was just said here before, but I have lived there since two thousand and eight, and those two point nine one acres are everything that I have to show for myself. It's everything I worked hard for, and, you know, it's, it's, I know it's just a house and land, but it's everything I've worked hard for. But my two biggest assets, or three, are the things I care for the most are my wife, my six-year-old son, and my three-year-old daughter. Uh, they made mention of a person riding a bicycle with a helmet. Well, that's us. We ride up and down the entire neighborhood, and we go there every evening to do that. And we just don't want that taken away. I mean, we're basically setting ourselves, Sonoco, and the county up for disaster. I mean, what, what's happening now is not going to work. I mean, if we do nothing, somebody's either going to get hurt, get killed, and then it's the lawyers and who's liable, and it's, let's not get to that point. Let's put our brains together as a group and figure out what we can do. And I ask all, if you were in my shoes, what would you ask of your commissioner and commissioners and your judge to do for you? When you go home tonight, think about it. I know y'all have kids and grandkids, and if they were up and down those streets, what would you do? Or what would you want done if this was your neighbor and this was getting taken away from you? Thank you.
Thank you. John Schull?
My name is John Schull. Uh, I live at one-one-five-eight-oh Golden Mist, and S.H.U.L.L. And I'm, I'm the one that owns the property that the red foxes live on, as you, as you mentioned. And, um, in fact, just to finish that, what I'm talking about is, is that the fox den is, is less than a hundred feet off of Golden Mist, and it's a daily occurrence that someone's parked there to watch and see the foxes. So, and it's a little thing, but it's, it's kind of nice, and we've left, um, a big part of our thirteen acres alone, just so the deer and the fox and the wildlife have a good sanctuary, um, and to their benefit. Uh, in general, my opinion, uh, of the Roan's Chapel exit off of Highway Thirty is that there's a number of people that live in our neighborhood that avoid even going off of it with a car because it's on a long sloping curve, and it takes, um, the car that's coming on Highway Thirty going either direction, um, you cannot get up to speed prior to them, uh, getting on your tail. So it's on a long curve, because of that, people exit on Rainbow Trail or they exit on Pate, so they don't have to deal with that long-sloping curve, even a car. So an eighteen-wheel full or empty truck, um, has, is going to have some serious issues, uh, not impending traffic or causing accidents. Um, so they're going to use the different roads even besides Roan's Chapel to get into the facility that's on the backside of Roan's Chapel. So, um, the second thing, uh, that I see is, once they do tear up Roan's Chapel, then they've got to have an alternative to get to it, and then you've got two roads that dead into Road Chapel. One of them is our road, which is Golden Mist, and the other road is-
Golden Nugget.
-Golden Nugget. And they both come off of Rainbow Trail and dead into Roan's Chapel, uh, right at the S-curve. And so, um, you know, we've got issues there. On an individual basis instead of general, uh, I'll say that the noise is greatly going to affect, um, the people that live there, the animals that live there, and everyone that lives in that area, uh, because of the way that the trucks are going to have to be routed. The, uh, the last thing that I'd like to say is that I, if there's anything that we as a group can do to stop this, please let us know, because I will promise you that you have a, you have a group of individuals that are very dedicated to doing the best thing we possibly can for the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Griffin?
We are on Golden Trail, but across the street are the Bilbo's, and then the site that is going to be developed is right behind them. So we are very close to it, even though we are on Golden Trail. Um, I guess I was disappointed to hear that, um, Mr. Catalina didn't know how we felt. Since we had met with him and Judge Peters, we have had a petition, we have had emails, and we have had letters objecting to this, and this was in July before the sale was finalized. This company, when they met with us, said, "We looked at different sites, but this is the only one that worked." Well, it's the only one with their price tag on it, is what it was. They care nothing about the integrity of our neighborhood or the people that live there. This company is willing to destroy the lives and the lifestyle of a hundred and twenty-five homes in this area, and they don't care. Air pollution, dust, and diesel fuel fumes, noise. Minette Bilbo says she can already hear the noise of them, them cutting down, destroying the neighborhood over there. Noise, eighteen-wheelers, twenty-four-seven. Think about your home. How would you like this, twenty-four-seven, in your backyard? Safety concerns and road destruction has already been mentioned, and we, as taxpayers, are the one that will have to rebuild. The value of the homes is, is, is a prime, prime concern. We ask, we plead for your help in stopping the destruction of our lives, our lifestyle, our homes, and, and anything you can do would be appreciated.
Thank you. Uh, Joe Pettigie?
Hello, I'm Joe Pettigien, P.E.T.I.T.J.E.A.N. I live on Roan's Chapel Road. My wife and I have been there about five years, been in the area for about fifteen years. We bought our place on Roan's Chapel Road because of the beauty of the neighborhood, the sanctuary. We paid for our place, it's a, it's a big part of our retirement portfolio, and intended for our, our investment, as all other people do in College Station area, to increase in price. We heard, and, and I'm here today to direct Mr. Catalina. He was asking for direction in the newspaper the other day, and I agree with the lady ahead of me, that we've told you guys, ladies and gentlemen, what we want in this neighborhood is for this, this oil company not to come into our neighborhood. We, our first meeting and hearing of this was at an informal meeting at some, a neighbor's house where Mr. Catalina and a couple of engineers came, and, and he specifically used the words "done deal." This is a done deal, there's nothing y'all can do about it, and, and you just need to try to get along with the oil company. Those specific words, I'll never forget that. Since then, we've met a couple times at the pastor's church, Roan's Chapel Church, with, with paristors there, because no one knew about this. Now we're on board, and we want it stopped. We discussed with you guys at our last church meeting, there was no question, and we all came to the agreement that, that although prior deals had been made with the oil company to allow them to, uh, improve the road, change the road, widen the road, purchase property, that we didn't want any of that. We wanted you to tell them that they cannot do anything to the road, under the plan that knowing the trucks would destroy the road, which they will, forty trucks, forty weighted oil trucks a day will destroy the road in a month. I work in the oil industry, I know what I'm talking about. And they know now, they've called the bluff, your bluff and our bluff, that they'll destroy the road and they'll have you guys pay for it, and we'll be crying because our road's messed up, and what can you do about it? Well, I've done a little research, and we, we've had other people do research, and you guys have the authority on a county road. There is no question about that. There are a few things you can do. Weight limits can be put in, but they can get around weight limits, we see with permits. We've, we've discovered that- We've, we've discovered that. But what you can do is put signs that say "no through trucks." You have the right to say "no through trucks on the road or a portion of the road." That is, that is in law, and you can look it up. We certainly have. And, and I'm here today to demand, I'm a little different than my neighbors. I'm a taxpayer, we're all taxpayers. Sunoco is new in the neighborhood. They're coming in, and you guys are bending over to them to allow them to, to come in. You made your deals with them before talking to us and asking our opinions. And I'm here to demand that you tell them they cannot use this road, period. Tell them no, no use of the road or a portion of the road. You, there, there are certainly ways, because that, that means "no through trucks," it doesn't mean just "no through oil trucks." You can tell them, "No trucks on the road," and you can put the portion from the church back to the, back to the oil company's gate, or, or there are other ways, so that other types of trucks can get in. But you guys need to do something. You're destroying our property values, and you know it. And, and not to mention safety, the oil company's safety is, is, it, it's unacceptable what they're doing in a residential neighborhood. And the pro, I think you're backed in a corner because deals were made before you talked to the property owners. And, and that's where I am today. Thank you.
Amy Hilburn?
Hi, my name is Amy Hilburn, H I L B U R N. I live at one-one-three-eight-five Golden Mist, College Station, Texas, um, in the Rainbow Acres development. I, public speaking is not my thing, that's my husband's thing, so I'm going to apologize now. You'll get more emotional content from me than you will the facts and the, the legal documents that he stated earlier, which I hope you will take time to reference. He worked hard, uh, researching this for us. But, um, given the opportunity to be heard, I think I need to take the opportunity to speak. Um, we've been in Rainbow Acres now for nine years. The home we're in was going to be our home where we saw our kids go off to college. I have a son named William, who's eight years old. He's an astute child that loves baseball and plays piano. I have a daughter who's five, that is as charismatic as her father, and loves to dance. I have a seventeen-month-old named Hannah, who I push in the stroller trying to lose the baby weight on those roads. Um, he's going to be a good mix between the two children. We have a dog named Jackson, who does dart out from the yard from time to time and goes on his dogabouts, and with no leash law, that's okay. He comes home, the neighborhood watches out for him. I have a cat named Penny. I have two pygmy goats named Frozen and Domino. To me, the situation appears a decision was made for an acute return in investment without the wisdom of the long-term potential. Wise investments grow your rewards. Your residence and building your residential community would be a wise investment. Supporting a docking station eliminates the desire for any residential growth immediately in our neighborhood and surrounding that docking station as well. However, my greatest disappointment is not just in the poor investment choice, but in the lack of support for your constituents that have supported you. The words that have been put in print, that you have spoken, do not make your character, but your actions do. I am so greatly disappointed in the lack of action. The freedom of Sunoco to do with what they want on their property should not extend into taking the freedom of the enjoyment of mine, nor my neighbors. I ask that you protect the county's investment, you protect my neighbors, and you protect myself and my family. Thank you.
Vicky Catrolla?
My name is Vicky Catrolla, and I live at forty-three-seventy-six Roan's Chapel Road. Uh-huh, it's K O T R L A. Um, I'm going to be, uh, brief. My concern is like, I agree with all of my neighbors here, but I do have a different concern, uh, that hasn't been addressed yet. But in our neighborhood, we have several children with severe health problems. Their health problems can occur at any time of the day or the night, which requires ambulance services to be sent to their homes for transport. I would hate to think about what one of them suffering due to the delayed medical attention caused by eighteen-wheelers. Here again, like I've stated, I agree with all of my fellow neighborhoods, what they've, their main concerns are, is the safety. Uh, my husband and I bought our property on Roan's Chapel Road over ten years ago. We bought out here due to the fact that we were close to town, but mainly due to the fact that this is such a quiet and peaceful neighborhood. And I ask you to ask yourselves, how would y'all feel if y'all were in our place? You would be feeling the same way we are.
Thank you. William Catrolla?
Hello, my name is William Catrolla. I live at forty-three-seventy-six Roan's Chapel Road. Our neighborhood is currently peaceful with the area of roads used for recreational jogging, cycling, walking, as been mentioned by the other neighbors. This seems like all of this is about to change with Sunoco shoving their oil depot down our throat. Number one, safety. My biggest concern is an already dangerous intersection at Highway thirty and Roan's Chapel Road that has limited sight with the curbs on Highway thirty. The S-curve located past Roan's Chapel Church is currently hazardous to negotiate in a regular vehicle, much less than an eighteen-wheeler loaded or not loaded, uh, because of the size of the rigs. Another major concern is, uh, for the historic Roan's Chapel Church that has been there for over a hundred and thirty-five years. This is going to be disruptive for inside church services and really, really bad when they're trying to have a funeral outside, uh, at the cemetery. Another safety could, uh, issue for the elderly folks there at the church pulling out, in and out of the parking lot, it's going to be very hazardous. We have our home for sale and have dropped our price several times and can't seem to give it away with the potential buyers finding out what's going on in the neighborhood. Folks, property values have already plummeted. I believe we have been severely misled by our, our county officials who's, who seem to have already made promises to Sunoco that they should not have made. How would you like if this was happening in your neighborhood? We are begging for your help. Please put weight limit signs and reduce speed limit signs up now. Encourage them to go out Bird Pond Road. It's already set up for this. Sunoco has plenty of money to do so. Please help us preserve our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Robert Earl Kenner.
Good morning. To the, uh, county judge and to the commissioner, uh, my name is Pastor Robert Earl Kenner Jr. I pastor the Roan Chapel, uh, Roan Chapel Missionary Baptist Church. And, uh, like the community, uh, we are really devastated by this. But I think that the centerpiece to this argument, it's been alluded to, but it needs to be belabored. The centerpiece to this argument is, there is a historical church that is situated on Roan Chapel's Road, and adjacent to that church is a cemetery that has been there for over a hundred and thirty-five years. I have been pastoring for Roan, uh, very at Roan Chapel for about a year and a half now. And I have gotten a chance to meet some very loving people who really value that ground. And one of the things that we have annually is the church's anniversary. And I have people who come from different parts of the state, probably who were former members there at the church, and they've got up in age, and they moved away to other cities and other states. And they come annually, you know, to celebrate that church's start. And what has happened is that this company here is asking us to literally compromise that. And I'm just saying here today, I don't personally begrudge this company's right to exist. The conflict is, is where they have chosen to do this at. I'm really, really liking a rock between the hard places because I formerly was in the oil field. I've driven the truck before, and I know really that this something that is normal in a sense that you have these kind of projects on county roads. But I've never seen during my time of driving where you have seen this kind of infringement, where there was a church and a cemetery on the same road. I've never seen that. Not saying that it doesn't exist, but I haven't seen that. And I think that that in and of itself makes this unique. The county has to act. The county cannot sit back and watch this happen and act like they don't know who's resp, who's responsible here and who, and, and, and what needs to be done. The community is outraged, the church is outraged, but I just want to say that I think it is the county's responsibility to do the right thing. And I think that, uh, the community have already have expressed what that is. You know, this church is primarily consists of a lot of seniors. My concern as a pastor is for them exiting and entering the church with these trucks going back and forth down the roadway. I can't fathom that happening. And so I'm pleading with the church. I have faith in the, in you judge, I have faith in you commissioners to do the right thing regarding this situation. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that didn't sign in that wants to speak? Yes, ma'am. Come up and state your name and address. You can leave, come up and vote.
My name's Michelle Taylor. I'm a resident at one-one-eight-one-four Gold Nugget. I'm also a realtor, I have two homes listed on that street, on Roan's Chapel and on Gold Nugget. Um, basically, uh, I am the home closest to the Sunoco. Uh, we share a fence line. And what I want to speak first about is, uh, imminent danger. We've already had an eighteen-wheeler get stuck turning the corner from Gold Nugget to Roan's Chapel. So whether they're just using Roan's Chapel, Gold Nugget, whatever way they're coming in, it's not feasible. Um, Mr. Pettigien and our property, the eighteen-wheeler was having to back up, he had to back out. He couldn't do it. Secondly, um, in Rainbow Acres and Dawn Meadows, there are currently, um, eight homes listed. Seven out of the eight have had to price drop, some significantly, including my own. Um, we've only lived there a little less than three years. We do not want to sell the property. And, uh, I don't think we can. I'm, I'm asking you to please let us know what it is we can do to save our properties, our home values, and our quality of life. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Yeah, you, you'll need to come up and give your name and address.
My name is Aileen Vecchugo. S V E C H U G O, two separate names. S as in Sam, V as in Victor, E as in Edward, S as in Charlie, and then space, Hugo, H U G O. And I live at one-one-six-nine-three Gold Nugget. I bought my home in December of two thousand and thirteen. And, um, it's a very nice, quiet neighborhood. And I have a son who has autism, mental retardation, speech impairment. Now, these trucks are going to be coming up and down our road, and if he wanders in the road, he's killed, he's dead. And I have several times contacted Mr. Sammy Catalina to put up speed limit signs in our subdivision, okay? And since that time, there was one put up at the corner of Roan's Chapel and Highway thirty. There is no speed limit sign on Rainbow Trail coming off of a sixty-mile-an-hour highway. There was one put up on Pate at the end of, by where the church is over there. Recently, there was one just put up at the corner of Gold Nugget and, uh, Golden Trail, and then to that has been added, and no outlet sign at the end behind it a little way. But Rainbow Trail has two intermittent creeks on it, and those culvertways, or whatever you want to call them, are not built to take the weight of these trucks. The newspaper article says there is going to be eight thousand barrels of oil delivered daily. Do you all realize that this is two point four million gallons of oil a day? What if these trucks have a wreck? Where is all that going to go but into our property? And we are going to be the people that are going to be suffering for that. There should be already "no through trucks" on most of those streets and speed limit signs on all of those streets. I've even asked for an arrow at the end of Golden Trail at my property to indicate the road ends here, and it, it's never been put up. So I, I'm not sure what it's going to be, but we do have to be able to protect all of ourselves, because I agree with everybody here. There's a lot of young people in the neighborhood with babies, small children. There are people that, I've seen them all come by my house. There's even, I think, a man who's probably ninety years old that jogs on Golden Nugget and Golden Mist daily. Okay, so when these trucks come barreling through there, who's going to be responsible for that? There should be "no through truck" traffic definitely posted on the roads Pate, Rainbow Trail, Golden Mist, Gold Nugget, and Golden Trail. And the other option regarding Roan's Chapel Road, that road should definitely, the commissioners and the county court judge need to look at the better alternative route. Because I have looked at the map, and at the very end of this track that Sunoco has bought, there is like a narrow easement way that goes to other properties. It's very close to the Bird Pond, the access road that everybody has spoken about, which I think would be the most feasible, safest route for all of the citizens of our area, for the church and their members to be there. Because what they're going to do to us, property values, yes, we're going to lose our property values, but do we want to lose our lives? Do we want our children killed? Do we want our pets killed? Do we want, want to live dangerously every day? When I left my house this morning, all I could hear was the noise of the work going on there already. I, I rode down to the end of Roan Chapel, Roan's Chapel last night to see how wide the gate is. It possibly may be twenty, thirty feet wide that they're coming through, okay? That's not big enough to run two big eighteen-wheelers through there on a That's not big enough to run two big eighteen wheelers through there on a daily basis. And have, has Sunoco even, uh, petitioned the county yet to put in heavy duty culverts at the end of that road? And if they do, I'm going to ask that the commissioners and this county judge decline that and tell them they cannot use that. And I'm going to ask you to please look at all of us. We're here united. We are begging you and praying for you to look upon us. There's another, several other ladies that couldn't come tonight that have children with similar mental disabilities, like my child. And if they're wandering in the road, eighteen wheelers, by the time they see them, it's going to be way too late. So, but besides, I think they should be able to furnish, uh, an alternate route for Sunoco. I think that the low limit signs, uh, those can be surpassed because of the laws as Mr. Hillburn spoke about, that they can buy a state permit. And that's the end of that. So, you know, the only other way is to go to the Bird Pond route and, um, because they're, they're already over there. They've already got drilling over there, they've, they've got all kind of other, there's a Verizon industrial site over there. There's a lot of stuff over there and it would make much more sense for them to do that. And then BTU Electrical, they don't have an easement yet to get electricity to the site. So, do you have to, as commissioners and, and, and county judge, do you have to approve BTU giving them an electrical easement to that property? And if not, then that is going to also restrict what they're going to be able to do back there. Because all the people that back up to that property, e- every morning, just a little bit that's heard right now, you get, it's going to be twenty-four hours a day. And it, it's going to disrupt our lives and it's going to disrupt the emergency vehicles coming through. And just like everybody else said, the life we need and, and I am with Mr. Pettigian, I demand you, Mr. Judge, County Commissioner, County Judge, everybody, to look for a better alternate route because we are good paying taxpayers. Our property is probably worth a whole lot more than that fifty acres that Sunoco has come across and, and now wants to destroy the lifestyle that we have had and enjoyed. I've only enjoyed it since two thousand and thirteen, but the people that have been there since sixty-three, I think they should also be able to continue to enjoy that. And that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Morning, my, uh, name's Ken Beasley, B E A S L E Y, I live at three three six zero Golden Trail. And I've only lived there a couple, three years, uh, and I walk my dog every morning with my wife on those roads. Um, and I don't think I could more eloquently say what's going on over there better than these folks have. And I don't really know too many of them, other than it's like through a couple of meetings and going to find out what the hell's going on here. Cause this, I'm from, I'm from Montana and Idaho and this doesn't happen there. We don't have oil there. Oil doesn't have right of way. Uh, so for me, this gets now, I don't live on Roans Chapel Road, I use it just about every day, but I don't live on it. I can get out of that neighborhood, go in a different direction. But when that road's going to have to be repaired, those trucks are going to have to go another direction. They're not going to be able to use actively use Roan Chapel Road once it's destroyed and it's not going to take very long. Cause it was never built to a standard to withhold that kind of weight. So they're going to be using the alternative routes to get back into that thing. And they're going to be having to make corners where they got stuck before and it's just a bad situation. If you don't know exactly what we're talking about, you know, it might help to cut this whole process a little shorter if y'all would just take a little trip out there and take a look around the neighborhood and maybe poke in some of the driveways and see, uh, the kind of life that people have built out there. I mean, that's why we bought out there, just from what it is. Uh, so for me, it comes down to property values and personal property rights. And I won't be told that an oil company's got more right to do what they want to do than a hundred and twenty landowners. And I would just like to, uh, also offer support, more support, there's plenty, but more support for the Roans Chapel Church. I just, uh, it's a pretty modest situation there, but you can tell it's tradition. And I know Texans are all about tradition because they're here every day. And, but when it comes to personal and property rights, those matter a lot to me. And they matter a lot to the people who support that church and there are a lot of them. So I would just hope that you all can take under advisement what these people have said today and take another consideration about, uh, another outcome. And for me, I would just hope it all would go away. They don't have to access their pipe on that site, that's just where they found a place. Their pipe runs for miles in either direction. And there are other places they could access, put in their facility, that'd be a lot closer than going through this really nice neighborhood. Go take a look. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Cliff Copas, I live on eleven six thirty State Highway thirty. C O P U S. I've been out of town for four months and just got back Friday night. And, uh, read the paper Sunday and thought I had about this thing, which is crazy. I don't live in that neighborhood, I have no, it's not going to mess up my house, but I see these people are screwed. And the first thing I did is I drove down that road, down to the fence where they're building this facility, and I said, this is asinine. How could they build something like this in a residential area? I couldn't believe it. I figured, who did this? How did that happen? And I really don't know. Although Mr. Catalina's name's been tossed around a little bit on how this happened. And then I go to a meeting last night and they say, uh, well, it's a done deal, it's sold. You, uh, you know, then we start talking about redoing, you don't need to redo roads, put stop signs, all that stuff. Those guys should be out there. They should not be developing that property. It's screwing up a residential property, screwing all these people over. It's actually not going to affect me, but they're getting messed over and it's not right. I implore every one of you guys to drive over there someday between like seven and nine o'clock in the morning, turn in the Roans Prairie, come back out. See how the traffic is right there, how you can get back on that road. Do it on a foggy day or a rainy day. See how dangerous it is to turn on that road. I turn on it every day, numerous, numerous times. And it's dangerous sometimes. You've got to have a car that's got some get up and go to get moving out of there. It's a very dangerous intersection. Now, what I think is, uh, the commission dug the hole and they're asking them to, like, well, come give me, tell me what to do to get out of it. Well, they shouldn't have to hire lawyers, you should be doing that. Eventually, when, uh, somebody's going to get injured, maimed, or killed out there by one of those tanker trucks, they're going to sue, of course, the Thunderco. And they're going to sue Brazos County because you're responsible too for letting this site go in. And so if you're worried about money in the long term, you should do something about it. It's not fair to those people. And that's what I got to say.
Anybody else? Okay. I appreciate everybody coming in. Uh, we, we are not able to respond back to any of the comments in this segment, but we will certainly continue to take a look at things. But it just, uh, I appreciate it coming in. Is there any other item of call for citizens' input and or concern, any other issue? Hearing none, consider take action on agenda items three through thirty-seven. On three's resolution sixteen dash twenty-two, Internet intent to establish Brazos County Pay Program. Uh, and to set the hearing for October, uh, the eleventh at ten fifteen A M.
I move approval.
Second.
Are you considering the October eleventh at?
At ten fifteen.
And that's a public hearing?
That's a public hearing.
And, um, the only comment I have for discussion is, uh, an explanation of PACE. PACE is a commercial financing program that allows commercial and industrial property owners to obtain low cost, long-term improvement loans for energy, efficiency, renewable energy, retrofits, and water conservation. I move this, uh, approval of the resolution. And I hope we will seriously pass this resolution in that it would benefit many of our established business owners in our county.
Okay, motions have been made. Second, to set the hearing, uh, for October the eleventh at ten fifteen. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number four's approval. Bonds to be issued by Industrial Development Authority by, of the County of La Paz, Arizona. Finance, they auction aviation. Aston Aviation LLC, C L L LLC, Eastwood Airport Project located in Brazos County, solely for the purposes of section one forty-seven F of the Internal Revenue Code and for which, and for which Brazos County will have no liability. Second. Motion made second to discussion. I think this is, John, this is to move forward with, uh, redevelopment. You, you want to give us any kind of?
That, that's correct, Judge. It, uh, this is the financing for new hangar facilities at Eastwood Airport. And, uh, part of that requirement for these bonds was called a public hearing which was held. Uh, just to be clear and so it's on the record, there's no liability from the county. The county is certifying that there was a public hearing held in the set aside that requirement. Uh, we hope that, uh, the new construction appears to be able to do this out.
Okay, all right. Thanks for looking forward, moving forward. Uh, we've got a motion in second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number five's reappointment of the following commissioners, Brazos County Emergency Services District number two, term of appointment is one one, twenty seventeen to twelve thirty-one twenty eighteen. A Larry West, B Diana Curtin, and C Justin Irvin. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number six is appointment of judges and alternates for November twenty-sixteenth general election.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number seven is Brazos County Payroll Fiscal Year twenty seventeen. And I think I need to read the, the payroll. Uh, salary and wages is forty-four million, two hundred and sixty-two thousand, a hundred and ninety-two dollars. And benefits is twenty-three million, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. For a total of sixty-seven million, eight hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number eight is order sixteen dash zero zero nine directing payroll fund to the General Fund of Brazos County. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number nine is request for approval for out of state travel for jail administrator, Mr. Wayne Dickey, to attend American Jail Association Fall Board Meeting at St. Louis, Missouri, uh, October eleventh through fourteen twenty sixteen.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. None motion carries. Number ten is approval of nonprofit application for the Brazos County inmate work crew labor force to work for Aggieland Humane Society on October fourteen twenty sixteen to assist with moving and setting up equipment for Winterfest twenty sixteen at the Wolf Pen Creek Amphitheater.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number eleven is appointment of Tony Piccolo as a non-paid reserve deputy for Constable Precinct Two office. Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries. Number twelve, question. From election administrator for a variance of comp time policy to allow pol- uh, employees to accrue more than forty hours until February twenty-eight twenty sixteen.
Second.
That's correction twenty seventeen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Collier. Okay. Thank you. Yes.
Number twelve, question. Number thirteen is acceptance of delay prompt runway clothing and this lane is property led by inmate Stephen Brazos County.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And, um, the motion carries number fourteen is request from the Budget Office for the following personnel change effective October eighth twenty sixteen due to the amended order determining compensation court reporters filed on August twenty-third twenty sixteen. This will have an increase to the three sixty-first court's budget in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Number fifteen is request from Juvenile Services Department for the following personnel change effective October eighth twenty sixteen. This will have no budgetary impact on the FY seventeen juvenile penetration logic.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries. Number sixteen is approval of following job descriptions.
Move approval. Eight through.
I.
Or L.
L. J K.
Motion made second. I hear a second.
Yes, I second.
Motion made second to approve eight through L. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number seventeen, request approval for wire transfer of sixty-seven thousand, five hundred to the Texas Health and Human Services Commission, H H S C, as part of Texas Healthcare Transformation and Quality Improvement Program, Level Fifteen waiver. This intergovernmental transfer, I G T, will provide match funds to St. Joseph's prenatal clinic program. This project is under delivery system reform incentive payment, disre- move funds. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Non-motion carries number eighteen is request authorization for a wi- wire transfer of Texas Health and Human Services Commission for all funds available and allowed during the FY twenty seventeen from institutional healthcare providers participating in this program pursuant to the section two ninety-six point zero zero three of the Health and Safety Code. Commissioners Court of Brazos County would be authorized, has authorized the county to participate in a healthcare provider participation program and establish a local provider participation program.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number nineteen is pay authorization to A H I in the amount of ninety-four dollars and eighty cents for the office supplies and the amount exceeded the purchase order, I'd like to remove that from the agenda. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number twenty. Request from Expo for approval to retain one of the two, two thousand seven Calisac units that's been replaced for FY twenty, FY seventeen to be used exclusively as backup until it is inoperable. Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries number twenty-one is request from the auditor for an additional three thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars for capital improvement fund for the updated quotes for Sun Guard and Dell for the upgrade of the financial software, finance plus, commu- community plus, and Cognos. Total project is not expected to exceed eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. Total project is not expected to exceed eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars. Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Contract with Sun Guard Public Sector for the upgrade of Finance Plus, Community Plus, and Cognos reporting software approval of contract, which will put us on a six-month waiting list with Sun Guard. Motion made second to discussion.
Is it gonna get better? We have heads going different ways. Thank you.
Motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, participation of Texas Association, uh, risk management tool workers compensation program and section of additional coverage is... Move for approval.
Second.
Aye.
Consider take action on the agreement of payment of Brazos County funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand to be used by the Brazos County Convention and District Bureau to be used, uh, to promote tourism for Brazos County Expo. Move for approval.
Second. Aye.
Twenty-five is approval of following agreements with, uh, for FY twenty seventeen. A, Brazos County Historical Commission, B, Brazos County Solid Water Conservation District four fifty, uh, C, Brazos Valley Food Bank, D, Bryan College Station Chamber of Commerce, and E, National Alliance of Mental Ill- uh, Mental Illness.
Approval of A through E?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion possible action on contract renewal for Texas Juvenile Justice Department, for Juvenile Services Department to provide parole services for Brazos County youth.
Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is discussion take possible action on contract with Leon County Juvenile Probation Department for contract with, uh, pre-adjudication detention beds.
Second. Aye.
Possible action on contract renewal with Nexus Recovery Center for Residential Juvenile Services.
Move for approval.
Second.
Aye.
The following lease agreements with Southwood West, uh, A seventeen two two nine, Constable Precinct one, and B seventeen two thirty for Justice Peace Precinct two. Move for approval.
Second. Aye.
Contract seventeen dash zero eight eight, maintenance of Xerox copiers with Dayhill Office Technology Car.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Request permission to lease private property owned by Mary DeWora Zach located at four 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 zero Delishaw Tap Road for the purpose of staging area for Brazos County equipment materials during reconstruction of Delishaw Tap Road. County will lease the property for a period of twelve months at a hundred dollars a month, site located Precinct two. Move for approval.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Two is request permission to enter undrilled oil well pad site owned by Halcon Energy Properties located, uh, on the property of Mary DeWora Zach, uh, four 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 zero Delishaw Tap Road. Site will be used as staging area for Brazos County equipment materials during the reconstruction of Delishaw Tap Road, site located Precinct two. Move for approval.
Second.
Aye.
Special warranty deed from State By Institute for a point zero acre of land used for improvements on Smith Tana Road located in Precinct four.
Move for approval.
Second.
Aye.
Motion carries number thirty-four's tax refund application for the following, A, Wendy Simmers, overpayment of a hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventeen cents, B, Roger and Edwina Ram-Zick, overpayment of a hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-nine cents, and C, Clyde Goan, overpayment of ninety-eight dollars and thirty-four cents.
A, B, and C.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thirty-five is budget amendments, A, budget amendments FY fifteen slash sixteen, fifty-three point one through fifty-three point two, and B, budget amendments FY sixteen slash seventeen, one point one to one point two.
One point twenty, isn't it?
Big one?
One point twenty, I think.
Oh, maybe it is one twenty.
Second.
Uh, motion made second to discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number thirty-six, personnel change status.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Number thirty-seven's payment claims, claims to be paid by Brazos County, claim number seven one four eight seven eight five to claim number seven one four eight nine eight nine. Move for approval.
Second.
Say aye.
Aye.
Sure support on inmate population, sure.
Morning, Judge Commissioners, uh, working on the challenges of converting to Odyssey, uh, we do have a count for this morning, it's six hundred and twenty-one. Uh, we have thirty-one that are on ankle, monitor home confinement, and four ten.
Okay. Thanks, Sharon. Number thirty-nine's an aspect of the interest items and possible future agenda topics. Hearing none, forty, sit, please, call for citizens' input and/or concerns.
Morning, Judge Commissioners. Uh, two items this morning. One, I wanted to give y'all a quick update on where we are with the, uh, Odyssey Go Live. Um, as I'm sure you are aware, we went live starting, uh, over the weekend. But yesterday morning was the, uh, first, uh, day that we were open for business. We considered that our Go Live date. Um, things went, uh, relatively well. Um, I, I won't say I was surprised, there was a lot of hard work that went into preparing for this, uh, my staff and Tyler and even, really, the, the staff of all the departments in Brazos County, preparing to, um, to make this, uh, go as smoothly as possible, really paid off. There, there were issues, we'll still have a few issues, uh, uh, for the real near-term future. Um, in, in general, there were some issues with rights and roles that needed to be granted, uh, to people that weren't identified early on. There were some data conversion issues that, uh, Tyler, uh, technical people are, are working out along with our staff and, and the departments. Uh, minor things like, uh, print jobs that were adding watermark to, to printed pages. Um, you know, there were some business process adjustments that were needed and, and identified in, in some cases. Um, there were questions about how to, how to handle overpayments. Um, some of this stuff will come down to governance decisions, like who's gonna be adding, uh, attorneys, uh, in the future. Um, I can go into a little bit of detail, department by department. Um, I think I'll just save us some time unless you want me to go into all that detail. I will say that, um, probably the jail, um, experienced the, the biggest problems. They are functioning on Odyssey, they're not exclusively on Odyssey at this point. They're actually still using the older able-term system, uh, for printing bond forms. So, uh, we're gonna get out there today and, and see if we can't, uh, resolve that as well as an issue with, with mugshots. The, uh, interface to the LiveScan system that they use for fingerprinting and capturing mugshots and sending that data to, to the state and getting state detail back, uh, that's working for the most part with the exception of the, the mugshot. We haven't gotten that linked back to the jailing record in Odyssey, so we're, we're gonna be working on, on that. Um, we, we think we've got a, a solution. Um, Denton County has already solved this once, so we, we, we think we, um, we can get over that hurdle hopefully today. Um, there are a few other outstanding issues with the jail. Um, we're waiting to complete, well, uh, as of yesterday afternoon, we were still waiting to complete some, uh, transfer of, of prisoners into bunks within the cells. And after that has happened, then we can turn on some interfaces to the Guardian R F I D, uh, vendor, as well as Tiger Commissary and the Renova Video Transport, uh, of prisoners' systems. Um, you know, there were a few things like calendaring options that were grayed out. Again, we think that's rights and roles. And by and large, most of the stuff that was identified yesterday has already been, been resolved, so we're really in real good standing. Um, we expect to continue to find things like that, uh, for the next several days. Uh, I think conventional wisdom is, um, Wednesday tomorrow will kinda be the, the peak of, uh, of the troubles that we're gonna experience. The, uh, Tyler team that, uh, is here on the ground with us, uh, is gonna be with us, uh, for another two weeks or so. Um, as, uh, things start to, to taper off, some of that, some of those personnel may, um, may retreat back to their home offices. But, uh, you know, this is gonna be a process, uh, that, uh, it's gonna take a couple of months for us to transition out of the, the mode that we're in right now, uh, to, um, the next stage of support. Um, that may be a two-month process before we finally go, um, finally transition to the standard maintenance and, and support. Um, but, uh, a- again, there was nobody running around with, uh, their hair on fire yesterday. Um, actually, there were quite a few smiles. There was a lot of acknowledgement that, you know, some of the stuff that they were seeing was, uh, it was minor, uh, they were getting it resolved. And so there was, I, I thought, I thought it went real well. So, um, I, I hope that, um, this, uh, will continue and we won't see anything major from this point forward, so. And there's good reason to believe that, so. Uh, the second thing that I wanted to, uh, to bring to your attention, um, we, we finally have the quotes necessary for the hardware and the professional services for the, uh, automation of evidence management in the R M S. Um, we, um, you may remember that R M S, uh, the, uh, R M S that we contracted for originally, um, we wound up substituting a different R M S, uh, when the vendor pointed out that they didn't want to continue supporting that one that we had contracted for. At that same time, when we modified that contract, we added in evidence management and intelligence and some other modules. And, and, uh, evidence management was one of those that we had added in. And since then, we've been working to, with, with the, um, investigators in the prosecutor's offices, as well as the constables in, in the sheriff's department, uh, determine who wants to, uh, use that evidence management module to automate their evidence management. Uh, it's gonna require barcode scanners and, and readers for, for tagging that, that evidence. And then, um, uh, migration of data out of a system that we're currently using for evidence management, it's called File on Q or Evidence on Q. Um, the, uh, the cost for maintaining that current system is gonna go away. So, at some point, uh, this is gonna pay for itself. Um, anyway, we've got the, we've got the quotes on hand, so hopefully next week we'll have it on Commissioners Court for, uh, uh, requesting monies to amend. I'm not saying this very well. Anyway, we're gonna request an amendment to get the monies in place and then, um, have you approve a couple of change orders to that contract. Okay?
All right. Thank you. Heard a lot of positive things about the, uh, the way the Odyssey thing went. Uh, so, I agree. I know there were some glitches, but there always is, no matter when you, when you take a system as big as what we had and move it over to something else, there's always gonna be a few problems, but from what I understand, they were fairly mild, you know? And it's, it's things that can be solved.
The county attorney's office, uh, elected not to even call in, dial in for each phase, uh, gathering today, because they felt like all issues that they had counted at that point already involved, so they didn't, they didn't, uh, the district court's office, uh, indicated that all was looking good in his office. Uh, again, they're likely to encounter additional problems, uh, over the next couple of days. But, uh, I don't know recently, uh, the, they're gonna encounter anything that we're having to solve.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Eric, for your, your and your staff's hard work. I appreciate all the departments who were involved and continued to be involved and did everything they could for, uh, their, uh, their departments to make sure that we were successful in getting this done, so.